Time being six o'clock. Today is November 20th of 2017. Board of Selectmen's meeting. Anybody recording the meeting?
Pre-cam.
And Board of Selectmen recording also. I'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance to start our meeting.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody, tonight. It's been a holiday week, it's a short week. Hope everybody's gonna have a good Thanksgiving this week. Get together and have a family. I'm gonna read the agenda aloud. 6:00 PM, call to order. 6:00 PM, public hearing in conjunction with the Board of Assessors relative to selection of the residential factor to determine the percentage of tax burden to be borne by each class of property. 6:15, Board of Health Variance for 39 High Street. 6:30, Board of Health Variance for 21 Washburn Road. 6:45, discussion with Raymond Levy regarding retail sale marijuana sale in Freetown. On the consent agenda, we have actions relative to vote to accept a one-year extension to the Massachusetts Recycling Incentive Grant. Vote to accept the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program grant for drop-off collection equipment and education materials awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Animal Protection. Sign an agreement between Freetown and Lakeville to use the Lakeville Animal Shelter. Approve Chapter 90 final report for South Main Street speed study and crack sale for Cranberry Drive, Forge Road, High Street, Holland Road, and Logan Street. Approve and sign public notice for 2018 annual town election. Discuss special election and special town meeting options for marijuana retail sales. Approve ambulance abatements for December 2016 and October 2017 as submitted by Fire Chief Gary Silvio. Approve minutes for Board of Selectmen meeting on November 6th, 2017. The Town Administrator's Report. Under the Board of Health, we're gonna be doing the variances. Personnel Board, appoint Bruce W. Wilbur to Cable Advisory Committee effective November 21st, 2017. Approve change of status form for Nicholas Drinkwine as submitted by Police Chief Colton Abbott. New business. Dates for upcoming meetings. Selectmen's meetings, November 4th. Meetings Monday, December 4th, Monday, December 18th, Tuesday, January 2nd, Tuesday, January 16th. And executive session. MGL, Section, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, 3, to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining with the Freetown Police Association. If an open meeting may have detrimental effects to the bargaining position of the public body in the chair, so declares. I will be acting chair tonight. Selectman Pacico wasn't able to attend. It'll be myself, Selectman Jones, and Selectman Sullivan. So, it being now 6:04, I'd like to have a call of a public hearing on the tax rates to order.
Me? Me too? No, that's no orgasm.
Thank you. So, what do you have going on, Tom, this year?
Well, this year, as usual, the Freetown Board of Assessors is pleased to provide the Board of Selectmen with the statistical information to aid the Board of Selectmen in determination of the residential factor for the town of Freetown for fiscal '18. In addition to the summary sheet, please find the following three items. You should have a sheet that has an Excel spreadsheet.
Okay.
Okay. As well as, which, that compares last year's assessed values with the new fiscal year assessed values, list the differences in tax dollars, as well as the difference in percentage for the average single-family property, two-family property, and commercial property. And you also should have the historic shifts and the resulting tax rates, which is a list of the chosen residential factor and the resulting tax rates since the year 1991. You also have a what-if scenario worksheet, which lists the tax burden for all classes of property, beginning with a single tax rate, which, if it were chosen, would be approximately $14.98 per thousand, up to a maximum shift of 1.5, which would be a residential factor of approximately, a residential rate of approximately $13.04 per thousand, and a commercial, industrial, and personal property rate of $22.47 per thousand. Fiscal '18 is a certification year with the Department of Revenue for the town of Freetown. And the fiscal '18 property values have been certified by the Department of Revenue. Fiscal '18 values are calculated from the analysis of the qualified sales that occurred during calendar year 2016. The assessed values are derived from analysis of studies of the sales by classification, style, age, size, location, neighborhood, et cetera. And the Department of Revenue then reviews and certifies the values. Anyone have any questions so far?
Can you just explain to the people here that, what the CIP, what the shift is exactly between? I know we've done 1.43 percent in the past, but, so people understand what we're talking about when we talk about the shift, the difference between the two.
Okay. So, if, in fact, the town were to choose a single tax rate for the entire town, for all classes of property, then that would be $14.98 per thousand. But historically, in this town, the town has chosen to shift part of that tax burden to the commercial, industrial, and personal property values, and therefore lower the share, the burden, on the residential class.
Okay. So, everybody understands what we're talking about? If we flat, due to flat rate, it would be, everybody would pay the same, commercial and residential. We've, in the past, have shifted some of the heavier burden weighted towards the businesses, so the residential pays a little bit less, the businesses pay a little bit more, at the percentage of 1.43 percent, correct? Or times, actually.
That's been, that's been the case for the past few years.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody understood what we were talking about. So, let's start right beginning, go through it. So, last year's rate increase was how much for the residential?
The increase? Okay. Oh, you know what? I'm gonna continue then.
Okay.
Okay. So, I just have some basic notes regarding the historical shift for the town. The town did choose a factor of 1.43 for fiscal '14, '15, '16, and '17. Prior to that, the town chose a shift factor of 1.45 for the prior 12 years before fiscal '14. So, the fiscal '18 levy increased by 5.8 percent. The total levy amount is $19,751,900. The total value of the town increased by 4.8 percent from fiscal '17 value. The fiscal '18 total value of Freetown is $1,318,756,100. Residential property values increased by 3 percent. Commercial property values decreased by 1 percent. Industrial property values increased by 20 percent. And personal property values increased by 11.1 percent. Any questions on those?
So, there's a slight decrease in commercial value, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
And the 20 percent in industrial is due to solar farms.
And currently, solar farms are paying taxes?
Yes.
Okay. Do you see that? I know this is off-topic. Do you see that changing? Because I know there's been talk about solar farms being exempted from real estate tax.
Well, let's, we'll continue on here, and then we can go back to that question.
Correct.
The fiscal '18 new growth has been approved by the Department of Revenue. The new growth figure is $188,900. And the detail is as follows. $131,300 is from the residential property class. $5,400 is from the commercial property class. $379,900 is from the industrial class. And $64,300 is from the personal property class. I also do need to just mention that for fiscal '18, there is an excess levy capacity. It will be approximately $93,460. So, now to go back to the question that you were asking about solar properties paying taxes. The $379,900 new growth from that industrial class is almost exclusively due to the solar farms.
Solar farms.
And it's not really that, I don't know, Karen, can you speak to it?
There is legislation in Boston, working its way through the House, I believe, to set the parameters on how to tax solar, because the way the law reads, if you're using it for one purpose, it's exempt. If you're using it for the other purpose, it's taxable. We have one entity in town that has a site who feels that they're exempt. We don't think so, but that's gonna work its way through the appellate tax law. The legislature is trying to fix that, so assessors overall don't have to fight this battle. So, I think they're all gonna be taxable somehow. And it's, I think it'll be before the end of fiscal '18.
So, that's definitely something we need to work on for pilots, for those, in case it flips over to the non-taxable. So, I know this...
Based on that legislation, I would not, I wouldn't go into a pilot, because I really... Pilot is supposed to closely mimic full and fair value.
Right.
So, unless you're coming in with something that's almost exactly what they would be paying in tax, you're cheating the town.
Unless state passes, state passes exemption.
As long as the legislature is working on legislation to make them taxable.
Right.
You're, you're okay. If they were sitting on their hands going, "Oh, we don't think it's so important," then we should probably take steps to secure some sort of payment.
If we looked into it now and see what's going on, where we are in the state of the bill, what exactly it's gonna detail, maybe we can take some preemptive steps down the bottom line. Nothing now, obviously, because currently the system still works the way it is. But I don't want to be behind the eight ball, law passes, and then we have to go through town meeting process to...
We actually, we actually have a, it's a nonprofit, or, no, that, that, I don't know what...
They're not a nonprofit. They're, that's a consortium.
A consortium, sorry. And they're asking to do a pilot versus paying for full and fair tax value as they're assessed.
Yeah, but that's, the letter that you were sending me is something entirely different.
Oh, all right, okay. I misunderstood.
That had nothing to do with, that letter that you sent me this morning has nothing to do with a pilot, with a solar.
Oh, I know, it's not solar, but they own property in town that they're trying to...
Yeah.
All right. Okay, I thought, I thought they had solar issues, so, all right.
They may be wanting to put, put something on the cap land, though, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Sorry, again, it's off track a little bit. I just, I just thought of it, and I'd rather, you know, start working on, pave the groundwork now, instead of being, you know, behind the eight ball, waiting around. Anything else, Dan?
Not unless you have questions.
Well, I'd like to open up to see if anybody else has any questions. Charlie, you have any questions?
No, I, I, I see what's going on here.
In the past, we've done, for the last, looks like, four years or so, we've done the 1.43 split, which has worked out quite well. Currently, where we're sitting now, we have a little excess levy, but we do have a lot of projects that have been kind of, come to fruition between police station votes and possibly bringing sewer down to the town, so I think we should probably stay right where we are. Any questions from the public? Comments, concerns? Okay. And you're looking for what from us tonight?
You have, it's your, it's your choice. The choice of the split is yours to make.
I'd make a motion to continue your ads at 1.43 in the past five years.
I'll second that motion. Motion being seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have some paperwork.
Customarily, all I ask you to do is circle your choice, and in this case, highlight it, and initial it.
Karen, I actually have the LA5.
There was something in the email about having the LA5 signed tonight?
That has to be signed electronically.
Okay. And we have to come in and do that in the computer?
Yeah, Jackie gives you your passwords, yeah, so...
But they can actually just sign it. Oh, I see. So, if they do...
Yeah, we'll sign it electronically.
How about, how about the page one? Will we sign that tonight, by any one of you?
You can't sign that until everything else has been submitted as well.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Motion, not a motion, but close the public hearing and continue on with the rest of the meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion being seconded, close the public hearing, continue the rest of the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. What time is it now? Somewhere a little past our 6:15. 6:15, Board of Health Variance for 39 High Street. Specter is here. This will be turned over to the Board of Health. Charlie?
Okay, and then I will open the public hearing for the septic variance for 37...
39.
39 High Street.
Good evening.
Good.
For the RAC and I'll see if I can see consulting engineers here before you for 39 High Street. Currently...
Do you have any green cards? I'm sorry, Niles.
There was no effective orders, so there's no, no need to...
Okay.
No, thank you. So, currently, the septic system is in failure. Actually, it's overtopping in the backyard pretty significantly at this point. What we're proposing to do is put the septic system further in the rear of the property. That gets us far enough away from the well. We, to do that, this portion of High Street has a high water table, so what we had to do is we had to put in two new tanks, a new septic tank and a pump chamber, and pump it up the hill to get to the material. This kind of blends it into the hill, so it doesn't look like such a mound or a hill in the backyard. It'll actually blend into the grid a little bit better. What we're here before you is we have two different variances. We're asking for a local upgrade, I should say. One, because of that, both of them are due to high water table. One is because of the tanks, where the plumbing comes out of the house, you require to have a 12-inch separation between the inlet and outlet of the tanks to the water table. We were unable to meet that because of the fact that where the water table is and where the plumbing is. What Title V requires you to do is they require you to put rubber boots on the inlet and outlet of the septic tanks, and they require monolithic tanks, which we've done both. Just to, just to confirm that there's a, you know, a water type seal and that there will be no leakage. The other variance that was local upgrade that we're asking for, just to minimize the mound in the rear of the property, is from a four-foot separation to a three-foot separation, I'm sorry, a five-foot separation to a four-foot separation to water table on the septic system itself. These are all things that are allowed under the local upgrade approval process under Title, Title V.
So, you're saying from the bottom of the field to the water table, you want four feet?
Correct. Because of the percolation rate, the percolation rate, we got less than two minutes an inch. That requires a five-foot separation typically. We are allowed that one-foot variance if the board allows. Obviously, it's a much better situation than what's there now. Currently, the septic system's in the water table, and it's overtopping significantly, so anything we can do at this point will be, you know, a much better situation.
Okay. Anyone from the public with any input, any questions?
What Derek, what's your?
I don't see any problem with the variances. Like Niles had said, it's, anything is better than the situation and stuff.
So, you have a, it's discharged into a pump chamber? Or is it discharged into the tank and then pump chamber?
That's correct.
Tank, pump chamber. And then you force it down?
Correct.
Okay. Now, we'll close the public section of the hearing. Any, any questions here, Rob?
Nope, I think that's it. You meet all your setbacks, everything's fine with that.
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the variance for 39 High Street with the stipulations as stated with the rubber boots and the monolithic tank. And what is the bedrooms on that? Is there a bedroom restriction on that?
It's a four bedroom.
With a D restriction for a four-bedroom? That's designed for four-bedroom system?
That is correct.
With a D restriction on a four-bedroom system?
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close the public hearing on 37 High Street.
39.
39.
You must know something, was it 37?
Yeah.
37. We have the next one at 6:30, so we have about nine minutes, because it's a little too fast. So, I want to take a couple of things ahead of your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're the chairman's prerogative and takes a couple of things out of order here while Derek's here. Derek, you want to go over the one-year extension for the recycling grant?
Pretty much dry on it. We have the Backoffice Recycling Program that Kevin Edgert is involved in. We had a one-year renewal on it, and I jumped on it while we had the chance, so it's pretty simple on that.
Anything else that you want to put in that?
No.
You are the health chair.
Yeah, yeah, I realize that.
Okay.
Yeah, no. Would you go with it?
The only thing I want to look into on it is part of the agreement was $7,500 for the purchase of a new dumpster, where we're already repairing our dumpsters. I'm gonna see if repair will also fall under that umbrella. And then, other than that...
Right, we're going through and repairing them all, so...
Right.
So, do you need a motion to sign that, that grant, or you just have to apply for?
It's just waiting on a signature. We figured it was best to bring it to you for a signature, but other than that...
All right. Make a motion to endorse the grant for the Massachusetts Recycling Incentive Grant.
Aye, I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And while you're here, the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program grant?
I don't really know much about that one, to be honest with you. I didn't bring that one up.
It's part of the same paperwork.
That's all part of the same one?
Oh, then I just focused more on the recycling part of it.
Okay.
They didn't need an endorsement by December 8th.
All right. Do you have that? Do we have a copy of that?
Yeah, it should be.
In the folder, signature packet?
Yes, there's one, there's a couple.
All right. I'd like to get a motion to endorse that as well.
I'll make the motion that we endorse.
For the Sustainable Materials Recovery Grant. I'll second the motion. Motion being seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Is Lisa coming for the, Lisa Podolsky coming for the animal shelter?
She's not. She said it was the same as it was last year. She double-checked everything. She recommends it.
All right. Hold on, let's go to that desk. Try to stay in order as much as possible. I'm gonna wait on Chuck's, the Chapter 90, until he, to see if he's gonna come in or not and explain it. I know we had a late-night stripen last night, road stripen last night. So, I have a letter here from the town of Lakeville. Lisa Pacico, Chair, Freetown Board of Selectmen, dated November 7th, 2017, regarding agreement between Lakeville and Freetown for Lakeville Animal Shelter. Dear Chairman Pacico, at their meeting on December 20th, 2017, the Board of Selectmen, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen, will be discussing the renewal of the contracts for the towns that utilize the Lakeville Animal Shelter for housing stray and surrendered dogs. I have attached a proposed contract for the town of Freetown for your review. None of the terms have changed in the board. If your board would like to renew the contract with Lakeville, please place the attached contract on the upcoming selectmen's agenda for discussion. If approved, please sign and return two original copies to me by December 8th, 2017. If you no longer want to contract with Lakeville for the use of Lakeville Animal Shelter, please notify me by email, no later than December 8th, 2017. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Tracy Craig McGee. And I have a copy of the contract. It looks to be the same as it was last year. Daily boarding fee of $15 per day. Payable with either cash or bank check. $20 drop-off fee for the dog. They won't accept cats. Any dogs that have been surrendered to the Freetown Animal Control Officer brought to Lakeville Animal Shelter must be accompanied by paperwork for the animal, such as the name of the veterinarian, any registration papers, and other paperwork deemed pertinent. Any dog that is surrendered to the Freetown Animal Control Officer is placed for adoption with the Lakeville Animal Shelter will be accompanied by a fee of $50. When the Freetown dog is adopted, the town of Lakeville collects the adopt, and keeps the adoption fee. The town of Freetown's Animal Control Officer is responsible for transporting all dogs to the Lakeville Animal Shelter during the hours of operation of the Lakeville Animal Shelter. If the Freetown dog has been identified as being unadoptable, i.e., has been, has bitten, a person shows aggressive tendencies, or fear-biter, the town of Lakeville will require the Freetown Animal Control Officer to be responsible for the euthanization and disposal of the animal once the seven days quarantine period expires. The town of Freetown would be responsible for any medical expenses incurred during the seven days of quarantine period for a stray dog. It would be the responsibility of the Freetown Animal Control Officer to bring the animal for medical care. The town of Lakeville will not be held responsible for the behavior of any Freetown dog after it's released to their owner. The town of Lakeville will not accept any kittens or cats. The town of Freetown, I don't know what the bias is with the cats, but... Proof of valid dog license, a current rabies shot. If an animal does not have a current rabies shot, it is the responsibility of the Freetown Animal Control Officer to obtain a rabies shot for the animal prior to release. The Lakeville Animal Shelter will not release a Freetown dog to its owner without prior confirmation of the Freetown Animal Control Officer. The town of Freetown shall indemnify and hold harmless the town of Lakeville, its agents, officers, and employees from and against any and all claims, damages, losses, expenses, including attorney's fees, medical fees, or for injury or death to any person or injury to any employee from and against any and all claims, damages, losses, expenses, including attorney's fees, medical fees, medical fees, death, any person, injury, property arising of the cause directly or indirectly by Freetown dogs being boarded at the Lakeville Animal Shelter, including but not limited to the consequences of any attack, behavioral, or action by the dog. If the dog up to the town of Lakeville, the town of Freetown will be released from indemnification after the seven-day quarantine period. This agreement is predicated upon Lakeville Animal Shelter retaining the right to refuse the accepted dog from Freetown if the shelter is filled to capacity. In addition, upon a request from the Lakeville Animal Control Officer, the Freetown Animal Control shall make immediate arrangements to remove and relocate any and all Freetown dogs should Lakeville Animal Shelter not have capacity to house the dog picked up in Lakeville. This agreement will expire December 31st, 2018, at which, at a certain time, the agreement will be reviewed.
I make a motion that we sign the contract.
I'll second the motion that we sign the contract. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
It being nearly 6:30, and it being now 6:30, Board of Health Variance for 21 Washburn Road, Health Chair, if you may.
I shall, I'll open the hearing for 21 Washburn Road.
Chairman, for the record, now, they're consulting engineers. Similar situation as the last. This one...
I'm sorry, no, there's no effective orders again on this one.
This had actually been in front of the board back in the early 2000s. It had been approved by the Board of Health as well as Conservation Commission. However, nothing, it stayed stagnant, and the people that originally owned it lost it to the bank. So, as you can see, it's owned by Bank of America currently, and my, my client is looking to purchase the home. So, they're looking, the plans have all been expired, so we're looking to just re-approve them now. So they're looking, the plans have all been expired, so we're looking to just reapprove them now. This one, this one, as far as variances go, we have three, uh, four of them, I'm sorry. This one, we have a reduction. Okay, so this one is, there's a tributary, no pond, as well as the fall brook. Our tributaries are surface water supply. And that's all designated by Title V and anything with those you have to have a one-hundred-foot setback. If this was a new piece of property, we would not build a subject system here. But because it's a repair, we have the maximum feasible compliance, so we are putting the subject system as far away as we possibly can. We're supposed to be two hundred feet away with a stream, and we're supposed to be a hundred feet away with a wet one. So we were able to get a hundred and sixty-three feet away, plus or minus with the leaching field, which in our opinion is maximum feasible compliance. We're getting, you know, you can see what we're doing is we're piping all the way through the back of the property here, all the way over to the side of the property over here. It's really as far away as we can get it. So that's the first one. We're asking from two hundred feet to a hundred and sixty feet to give it a little bit of room in the field for construction. We are also asking for a reduction from the subject tank to no pond. That's supposed to be a hundred feet. We're asking for thirty feet, I believe. That's where the plumbing comes out of the existing house now. There's no way of rerouting it because it's a finished basement. There's no way of, typically in a situation like this, we try to reroute the plumbing to come out the side or do something like that, but it's not feasible in a situation like this. For the third one, when we did that and Derek was out there with me at the time, we tried to perform a perk fest. The soil was too wet, water was pouring in. So we re-performed what's called a sieve analysis. Instead, we take a sample of the soil, we bring it to a lab, get a report, and it's all been submitted to the board for approval as well. And that's what we use to determine the size of the subject system. And then lastly, we only dug one hole instead of two, as required by Title V, only because we were trying not to disturb more area than we needed to in, you know, within the leaching field. So that was something that we had determined at the site as well, to just do one, so. And not just only that, holes had been dug in that area when they had originally done the design back in the early two thousands, so the more we disturbed, the worse it gets, so. Those are, those are the four local upgrades that we were requesting. Feel as though we meet, you know, we meet the standards, you know, to the maximum extent practically.
Your inspection holes were consistent with what we found back in the nineties?
It was almost, yeah, it was almost exactly the same. Depth, water table, everything were almost exactly the same.
Are you using a monolithic tank on this one? So there's no leakage into the?
Water table is not an issue on this one, is fine, because there's no.
I'm worried about the proximity to the no pond.
Correct. Yeah, there's no water table issue. You can see the water table. We're at elevation seventy-two point three, and the inlet and the outlet of the tank are at seventy-nine. So that elevation that you see at pond is just the top of bank. That's not actual water elevation. We felt comfortable, you know, we're not even, the tanks aren't even in the water table, even the bottom of it. Typically, if that was, if, even if the bottom of the tank was going to be at it, we would put a monolithic in an H-twenty tank, but we didn't feel it was necessary in this situation.
How about you, Derek? What did you think?
It's a tough spot. They did the best that they could with what they had. We got the sieve analysis paperwork. It's right here. It's basically rehashing old plans that were approved before, so it's kind of hard to argue with them.
What did your sieve estimate the perk at?
When a sieve, when a sieve comes back, it comes back by the percentage of sand. The percentage of sand came back at ninety-four point nine five.
Supposedly all sand.
Yeah.
Would have been a nice perk.
It was decent stuff, yeah. But it was, it was funny because when I, when I pulled it out, I got it, I didn't get it as much sand as I thought it was. It held together pretty well. But it would have come out of it in a really good purring, no matter what.
How many bedrooms is designed for?
Uh, three, I believe.
And you're staying with three, right?
That is correct. I know, I know, it is there, though. They're out there.
Anyone from the public, any questions? That being so, I'll close the public portion of the hearing. Any other questions?
Nope, I think that'll do it. I'll make a motion to allow the variance with the stipulations as noted and D restriction to three-bedroom property.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Jackie, let's not keep you any longer than we have to. Is that a public? No, it's not. So you want to talk about the upcoming meeting? Is that why you're here?
Yeah.
Uh, we can do both. We have ten minutes or so, so I think we have time to do both. I don't want to keep you any later than you have to.
Thanks.
Okay, we have in front of us the public notice for the town election Monday, April second, two thousand eighteen. Looks like we have a Board of Selectmen up, one assessor, cemetery committee, two finance committees, one finance committee for a two-year, highway surveyor, three-year, opposing authority, five-year, opposing authority, three-year, unexpired. Library trustee, three-year, two library trustees, I'm sorry, three years. Moderator, three-year, planning board, five-year, tree warden, three-year, water and sewer commissioner, three-year, regional school committee, Freetown, three-year term, regional school committee, Lakeville, three-year term, regional school committee, Lakeville, one-year, unexpired. We have a open school committee meeting?
Yeah, every year you're going to have at least one.
No, I mean, unexpired. We had one that was unveiled.
For the Lakeville.
Really?
Somebody had resigned and they appointed somebody and announced they're going to run for the election.
I got you. Okay, any discussion I need to add to that?
No, no. And it says you can announce when the nomination papers would be available, so that way people would know if they were interested in any of the positions.
When would that be?
It's at the bottom there, January. It's the Monday after the holiday.
January second, two thousand seventeen?
Yep.
Do you know when they close, when they have to begin by?
I don't, I have it, I have it all figured out, but I don't know that right now.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion to accept it as written.
I'll make a motion to accept the public notice for the year of town election.
Okay. I have a motion made, and I'll second that. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? I also wanted to note that it'll be held at the Freetown Elementary School Gymnasium. It is handicapped accessible. It's on Memorial Drive and Bullock Road, Freetown, Mass. Motion made and seconded. No discussion on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and the other one was the marijuana, how long we have to have the meeting? Unfortunately, I noticed this, it was April second. We have to have a meeting before that because they're going to start accepting applications on April first. The town election, the town meeting was October seventeenth, am I right?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Yeah.
Thank you. Twenty-third. So what is the time limit? How long do we have to wait to have that out?
As far as the special town meeting for that, there's no.
Grace period?
As long as you've got it before the April first. The, it depends if you were going to have, when you're going to have the election, if you're going to have something else put on. I know there was talk there might be other items on that election, and you might possibly have to have another special town meeting, so I don't know if you were just cutting that.
Unfortunately, we haven't got anything from the building committee. The building committee may want to put on a special town meeting for possibly a dead exclusion from the police station. We haven't met, the building committee hasn't met. It meets tomorrow. So for this meeting, we won't have anything, any recommendations or what they want to do for this meeting. So that's still up in the air, but it'll probably be a two-stage. We'll have a town, special town meeting, and then depending on the vote of special town meeting, maybe a exclusion, tax exclusion.
So if that is going to go on the singing ballot, then.
And I think it would make sense.
We could have the town meeting either before or after, and the deadlines make a difference if it's before or after.
Okay. What's the difference between the deadlines?
And then it matters if it's going to stay contingent or not contingent. If the town meeting is before the election, then it has to be done within ninety days. If it says it's contingent on passage, which would mean if it didn't pass that election, then it's a dead issue. But if it doesn't say contingent, then you could have, and that failed at the election, then you could have it put on at the election, and that, I believe, that town meeting, passage of the appropriations would hold. Of course, you can, you know, just verify it all with the town council.
I, I think just for dollars and cents, I think it would behoove us to have a special town meeting and then the election for both, so that way, before the April second, so it covers both. We don't have to have multiple special elections or.
So you have to give me notice thirty-five days.
Thirty-five days.
That's the thing you've got to remember. Yep. I have to have the form of the question, which the marijuana one, town council has to write up. If it was a dead exclusion, I talked to David a little bit about it, and Lisa had asked me some information that his bond council would write up. So that question has, the minute I receive it, it's thirty-five days from when I receive it from the board after they've taken the vote.
Okay. I anticipated being on next election where the meeting is tomorrow for the building committee, unless the building committee doesn't have a recommendation one way or the other. I don't know exactly where it is. I know they've done some site work. I know the process we've been through trying to design the building, but where actually we are, the thirty-five days is going to be, the sooner the better. So I'd like to see it, the next selectance meeting, have a recommendation one way or the other. Unfortunately, I don't have control of that, so. Okay. And we voted to, for the ballot, so I think we're good there. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Let's look at a couple of minutes. Want to do the free, the, the abatements? All right. I have two abatements from the Freetown Fire Department. Town of Freetown fire abatements for October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of two thousand sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll make a motion that we approve those abatements in the summer of two thousand sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
And Coinstar has an abatement for. All right, I have to amend that. The last one we just did was dated October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. It was actually an abatement for December sixteenth, December of two thousand sixteen, for two thousand sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Can I have a remotion to vote that?
Make the motion that we.
It was for December two thousand sixteen.
Ambulance abatements for December of two thousand sixteen in the summer of two thousand sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
I apologize for that. I knew this one was here, and I thought I had mine on the order. Anyone's abatement write-offs for October two thousand seventeen from Coinstar, dated October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, for the amount of fifty-nine thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I'll make the motion that we approve the abatements for October two thousand seventeen in a sum of fifty-nine thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thirty seconds here, we'll have the discussion with Ray Levy regarding retail sale of marijuana. It's scheduled for six forty-five. It's currently six forty-four, thirty, so give it thirty seconds.
I want to ask a question.
Sure.
So there's been no, as of right now, there's no set date for the special town ballot on marijuana prohibition or twenty percent rule?
The twenty percent was voted at town.
Well, it was, I'm sorry.
So we don't need an election for that, a special ballot question for that, only for the.
It's for the prohibition, and if the prohibition passes, that's the law. If it doesn't pass, the twenty percent is.
Exactly right.
So you're waiting on the building committee, meeting with them to find an actual date for it, but it has to be before April first. April second is the town election.
Correct.
You think it might be, you might want to hold it on the town election just because everyone's getting together that day.
We wouldn't be able to hold it on the town election because it's April second, so we need something in place by April first, or anybody could apply for a license.
Okay.
So we need something in place before the April first deadline, so it'll be sometime in either February or March.
Okay, special town ballot for that specific issue.
It'll probably be for that and probably the building, possibly the building committee, if they recommend a dead exclusion.
Okay.
So both will be on that same one. Okay. Sir, come on down.
How you doing, everybody?
Not too bad.
Good afternoon, good night, good night. I'm Ray Levy from Church Hill, Lakes Riverfront. We are here to put an idea forward that we have based on zone change that was enacted by the Board of Selectmen, by the planning board. They created an overlay zone that allows us to do a medical marijuana growth facility, RMD. There was a, there was a recommendation to not have any sales facility there, so no support. And we are now considering, since we're going to probably do the growth facility, we're looking to possibly do medical marijuana sales facility, not recreational. You know, with our building, which is out in the front on one seventy South Main Street, or it could be there, it could be another building on the inside, so that when we actually begin to cultivate, we have someplace to dispense medically. It's a permitted use by the state, but the town has to weigh in on that, obviously, and we didn't want to just send an application in. We really wanted to talk to people, talk to the board, and anybody else at the board would like us to speak to, to discuss that. I have with us right now from Liberty Compassion, who's one of our companies, he's a principal, and he's very, very familiar and versed in medical marijuana sales. And he will speak on the background and how it operates and why it's not, why no one typically considers it to be recreational. We know the twenty percent thing and all of that information that's going to go forward in the future for recreational. This has got nothing to do with that. This is just to have a place to dispense what we grow. So I would like to introduce, yeah, Mr. Terry Procaso.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you today?
This is Roddy Jost, right?
Yes.
Charles Sullivan?
Yes.
And David Gamash?
Hey, David.
Can you just get your name for the record again?
Sure, the name is Terry, and the last name is Procaso, F-R-A-C-A-S-S-A.
And you're with Liberty Compassion?
I am. So it didn't take me too long to come here because I'm right over the Rhode Island border, and I got involved in this industry, which is now, it's about seven or eight years ago. And we wound up submitting an application and putting together a project that I believe was the first license, license issued in all of New England. And that was with Summit Medical Compassion Center in Warwick, Rhode Island. So, you know, I came into it, I'm conservative by nature. I'm a business attorney. Actually started off my career in training with the United Baseball Department of Justice. So when I came into this industry, my biggest concern was how the federal government was treating it, and a little bit of, wasn't so keen on what I saw developing out west, particularly California and Colorado. But I gained a comfort level, and I did speak with federal law enforcement agents, both in Rhode Island and as we expanded in New England. Maine, for example, involved four out of eight licenses, Connecticut, one out of six, Rhode Island, one out of three, Illinois as well. We have large cultivation facilities. In aggregate, we have probably close to, at this point, probably close to two hundred employees. Treated about twenty thousand patients, and in six years with all those transactions, there hasn't been one incident, not one police incident. Treated about twenty thousand patients, uh, and in six years, with all those transactions, there hasn't been one incident, not one police incident. And it completely, uh, changed my, uh, you might wanna call it stereotype, because it wasn't really based on hard facts, but my perspective on what this industry was about. And I, I could only get there once I observed about five years' worth of patient data and patient activity in our facility. And the average age that comes into, um, a facility is fifty-five plus, and of those, what we're finding out is the vast majority are newcomers that have never used the product before. And the top two reasons people use it are for pain relief and for sleep. Um, there's a crowd that will always be using the flower, that's pretty consistent, and the trend in flower sales continue to increase. The new patients who come on, however, fifty-five and plus, they tend to gravitate, gravitate towards something that is not flower-related, it's called alternative dosage form. So it's, it's basically taking this medicine in the form of what you would take it as if you went to a pharmacy, whether it's a capsule, a tablet, a transdermal patch, um, tinctures, uh, different oils, waxes, whether they're in cartridges, um, vaporizing instead of smoking to eliminate the toxicity, uh, with respect to the lungs. But the science has evolved, where patients who come in now and they're purchasing these alternative dosage products, um, they're really understanding the various ratios that are in the medicine they're taking, taken. You're familiar, the psychoactive component is a cannabinoid called THC, however, there's like over four hundred other cannabinoids, and big ones called CBD, that people have gravitated towards because of its extremely robust anti-inflammatory and pain rel- relief, um, properties, um, even reducing seizures in, in a lot of people. And that product can be isolated by itself, but you can create various ratios, you can create ratios of fifteen to one, CBD to THC. So we've created it all, and we see patients of, of all types, I mean, so, you know, in, in our facility, we've seen priests come in with their siblings, we've seen, uh, policemen come in with their mothers, we've seen judges come in, we've seen basketball coaches come in. It strikes all walks of life, and, uh, but again, uh, the number one thing is pain and sleep relief, but the big, the, the thing that struck me as most interesting is most people that are coming and trying this, they don't wanna use opiates. So, you know, we're dealing with, an aunt of a friend of mine that calls me up, and she's had, she has a steel rod in her back, and she's been bedridden for nine months, and just can't sleep, and she's got about a dozen containers of OxyContin, and she just won't take it. So this is an alternative to that. So we're involved in a lot of interesting studies as well, uh, the effectiveness of people using this product to transition off of opiates, you know, that's a very big item. Other studies such as, um, using this form of medicine with respect to various forms of chemotherapy, and understanding how much more effective it is for a patient to go through the entire chemotherapy dosage, you know, typically six months, most people don't make it that long, uh, for a number of reasons, whether they're losing weight, or they're just too nauseous, and whether this, whether this can assist in that respect as well. So it's, uh, it's, it's been eye-opening to me in terms of the types of patients that come in, um, the very quietness of, of the crowd that comes in, very quiet facilities, people just come in, it's, it's not too much noise, they, they come in, they just wanna receive their medicine, they wanna leave. Um, and, uh, in, in fact, that it affects all walks of life. So, again, we haven't had one incident, it's been a humbling and powerful, um, experience for me to observe the number of people that's just treated. Uh, you know, I, we were taught, this is just about medical, by the way, and we're seeing if we can open up a medical dispensary here, next to the potential cultivation facility. It, it would be very convenient, because we wouldn't have to travel with the medicine to another location, it could be here, and it could be available for, uh, local people. And, um, let me think if there's anything else that I could add to this, I, I, and once again, this is medical, it isn't recreational, but on a side note, I hate that term recreational, just because from my perspective, it's, it's called, I would call it as adult use. And I can tell you that if there's a potential, that with respect to the potential patient base out there, I think sixty to seventy percent of patients that truly have debilitating medical conditions don't use the facility, because they just don't want their name in a government database. So I think to the extent that it is adult use, there'll be a lot more people that would access the facility and enjoy the privacy, the same privacy as they would have going to a CVS and being able to purchase a, um, um, you know, have a prescription filled without having their name and their condition in a government database. You know, that's, so that's my own personal feeling, having observed this industry, how it's developed, we're going through in Maine, it's transitioning to adult use, Rhode Island will probably get there a year from now. Um, and, uh, the science just keeps evolving more and more, as you see more professionals coming in from the agricultural industry, science industry, um, and it's been a remarkable, uh, movement, and an incredible economic development engine, too, in terms of, um, the satellite economies that have surrounded the industry, everyone who's either selling lights, insurance, legal, uh, nutrient supplies, construction, um, uh, software systems, uh, different, uh, different computers, interactive database, social media. It's been, it's been a very, uh, unique experience, and, uh, the thing that struck me is I don't see this, I've seen most trends occur where you say to yourself, well, this is a bubble that is gonna burst, whether it's a real estate, dot-com industry, mortgage-backed securities. And when I see the vast majority of patients and people coming on, fifty-five and plus, and the vast majority of them have never used it before, you know, I say to myself, where's, where's it gonna end? Because everyone thinks of the typical crowd, and they have a preconceived notion of who uses marijuana, well, that's a finite crowd. Once you have this other pool of people coming on, that's a massive population, and I just don't see the end, I see the continued evolution of this. Um, you probably saw in the paper a week ago, uh, Canada has legalized it, so, you know, I saw Constellation Brands, which they control Corona, they purchased ten percent of Canada, a publicly traded company that's in the marijuana space in Canada, they purchased, uh, ten percent of the two hundred million, they value that at a two billion dollar, as a two billion dollar company, and the company only had twelve million in sales. So you look at that, and you, and you can see the economic forces that are coming in to sort of grow it, so, um, so, uh, we're here, we've been involved, and we've got great experience in New England with very conservative laws and regulations. Uh, we're with a, uh, a very respected, uh, um, real estate developer who has a strong track record in, in Free Town, that's part of the company, in the, in Churchill and Banks and the Bakaris. And, uh, you know, I, I think something like this would be, uh, something that would, the town would be very proud of, similar to our other, like, flagships that exist, um, in Rhode Island, Maine, and elsewhere. And, uh, and we're an open book, if you ever wanted to come down to work Rhode Island and just kinda see what the dispensary looks like, um, you're, you're more than welcome, and I think you'd be surprised at how quietly people come in and out. And, uh, and, um, there is a need for, there is definitely a need for delivery systems, because when you see the patients coming in and out, there's a lot of people that come in with just tough conditions, wheelchairs, canes, whatnot, you know, so, um... So that's a little bit of the background that, you know, I'm not sure what you knew or didn't know in this industry, so I'm sorry if I spoke too long, um, but if there's anything specific, more details you'd like to ask me, um, I certainly would love to answer any questions that you have or the public.
I have a couple of questions. Um, you have another facility in, in Massachusetts currently, or you're in licensing for another facility?
You know, so far, we have a provisional certificate of registration that covers a, um, dispensary location in West Springfield, and another dispensary location in Toronton. Uh, we also have the ability to have a cultivation facility in Clinton. So, and a provisional certificate means that you have the right to go on and start building those out. Upon completion, they'll give you a final registration. So Liberty, because we submitted three applica, because you have, you're allowed to have three RMDs, which means a dispensary, you can add one more dispensary. So that's, that's, that's the status of Liberty's application right now.
And those other facilities, are they gonna need growth facilities also? 'Cause originally, when you came here, this was only gonna be a global growth facility, you were gonna transport it to, um, just dispensaries in other places in the state. Is that still currently what you're planning on doing with this facility?
That's what I would plan, I mean, we look at, we look at, uh, Free Town as a great opportunity to eventually be the, um, I guess, a culti- a cultivation hub where, where, because we have a decent amount of land, and we can bring the best technology, you know, the best advan- advancements, I would envision that, it would probably be a greenhouse, um, and, uh, so that, that would be the future, um, which exists today, and that's what we envision for Free Town. But it would be ideal to have a dispensary there as well. And, you know, I'm, I'm envisioning it might be something that could be so unique, where patients could come in and they could actually see how the process, how the process, you know, and you could have a see-through window to see how the products are being processed. You could have like a virtual TV to show the cultivation facility, it could be just a unique experience, uh, for patients as well to see that, and I don't know if anyone else is doing that, but the type of land that we have here would be conducive to that uniqueness.
I know in other states, that's strictly, you can't have patients within the, the growth facility itself, it has to be, it's a hot facility, it has to be, uh, secured, all the security arrangements and all that, so it's gotta be segregated, but...
Right.
Um, currently, where are you in licensure for the Free Town site?
Uh, with respect to...
I know there was some issue, we had to go through the zoning board and some time delay issues, um, last year.
Right, right. So, um, we can, uh, you know, if there's approval for us to pursue a dispensary, um, we can start the process, like, almost immediately with the state to have that license, so...
Where are you, though, with the current HCA, the way it is, the, the current growth facility, the cultivation part of it?
Oh, the current, the current cultivation portion? Um, we are, we've, we've advanced pretty far in terms of greenhouse architectural renderings, we, you know, probably partnering up with a large greenhouse operator, and actually, I would, I was expecting for him to be here yesterday and today to visit the site, it looks like next week, um, we'll probably, um, have him in to, um, this greenhouse is a, it's a little bit different than what we've done in other buildings before, but I'm pretty sure that the infrastructure is there.
You have license through the state to start construction at this point, in Free Town?
Not in Free Town, uh, but we can get there very quickly, because we've already been through the process with background checks, we've been, uh, through the application of a ten, phase two and phase three, so we submit another application, um, and we could move very quickly with Free Town.
No, I'm just talking cultivation, that part, 'cause that's where, where you've been so far up through the state.
That's correct, that's correct.
So you're actually haven't been licensed for cultivation?
Not, not by the state or Free Town.
You have applied, just haven't been licensed, or you haven't even applied?
No, we haven't applied specific to Free Town, um, but, like I said, we, we can do that very quickly.
Do you plan on doing that?
Yes. Timing, I'm not sure on the timing, but that's in, that's in our plans.
And the current HCA you have with Free Town, you currently have an HCA with Free Town, correct? With a post-community agreement?
I'm not sure if we did, we, we did, okay.
I know we went through all that last year to try to meet that deadline you had.
We did, we do have it.
And...
It's signed, executed, and, I, it's probably recorded, I mean, evidence records, 'cause he needed that in his application, too.
Correct. He also needed a non-contest letter.
We have that, too, yep.
Non-injection law. Question for you, Ray.
Yes.
That facility is located in the P-mud district, near P-mud land?
Uh, no, it's not, no.
Yeah, it's outside?
It's outside, it's, it's a reason, we went through the variance, we pushed it in, in the back, like, outside the P-mud, closer to where P Haven is, where we're not gonna touch, it's right in the middle over there.
How far are you from the mixed u, P-mud, for the people that don't know, is, is, uh, mixed-use development, and that's area was town, voted by the town to be mixed-use development.
From a distance, I would say, you know, five hundred feet or better, I don't know exactly, but it's not, it's not right next to it.
Any other questions, Charlie, got any questions?
Zoning-wise, is there the ability to zoning to have a dispensary at the location?
It is in mus, it is in the new, uh, medical marijuana hovelay district. Actually, it's adding medical marijuana more, it's a meda, marijuana hovelay district, which will allow for retail, depending on how many licenses are issued by the town and all that. What are you looking for us from tonight?
Uh, we would, we would look for, um, a vote to, uh, not oppose or to support a, uh, a dispensary, um, location for medical marijuana at the, at the location.
What I'm willing to do tonight, since we don't have a full board tonight, um, why don't you draw up, amend the, uh, HCA and submit it to us, to, to show what you want on, on new post-community agreement? Also, um, where you plan to put the site, maybe a, not a detailed plan, but a site la, a site layout type...
Locust map.
A locust map, show what you wanna do, where you wanna do it, um, that kind of thing, 'cause you're gonna be the first, if it's allowed.
Right.
Currently, we only allow cultivation and, and growing.
Right.
We don't currently allow sales. In your HCA, it does prohibit sales right now? Um, so we'd have to ch, we would have to change the HCA if that's something the board wants to do. So why don't you come back with a packet, put everything together, what, what your proposal is, so the full board can have a, a look at it and make a decision.
We can do that.
Okay, sure. Sound good? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
No problem, thank you. I don't know where I'll be on meetings, as far as meetings, that's, I mean, at times, that's done for a hearing. Minutes, oh, I gotta do, I gotta do chapter ninety stuff, too. I skipped that, 'cause I thought maybe Chuck would come in. So it looks like chapter ninety money, is, there's a final report here of what's left. Appears it's South Main Street. The work started and finished on South Main Street, started at six twenty-five sixteen, finished seven twenty-one seventeen, was forty-two twenty-eight twenty-seven. Engineering, South Main Street speed study, was done in June, forty-nine sixty, uh, with a hundred percent reimbursement attached to the forms, was forty-two twenty-eight twenty-seven. Final payment project, yes, that was paid June two thousand sixteen and June two thousand seventeen. Um, Green, Greenman Peterson Engineering, that's the bill for twenty-eight, the four twen, forty-two twenty-eight twenty-seven. Um, looks like it did track sealing on various roads, um, I noted the roads earlier, uh, I believe it was Cranberry Drive, Forge Road, High Street, Holland Road, Locust Street, for thirty-six thousand, five thirty-seven eighty-five. And that was, like, August sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. It was started on August twenty-eighth, finished September fifth, two thousand seventeen, thirty-six five thirty-seven eighty-five. And that's it for Chuck's stuff. What is he, is he looking for a sign-off on that?
Uh, yes, it's due.
All right, so I'll put him in motion to endorse.
I'll make that motion to endorse.
I'll second, motion made, second and any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, can we get a, something from him saying what's left in that account?
Yes.
Thank you. Shouldn't be much left. That was chapter ninety. And minutes, I have minutes for select...
And minutes, I have minutes for selectmen's meeting November sixth, two thousand seventeen, you have a chance to go through it?
I did.
Anything, anything you noted that any change to, no one to die?
So I'll accept the, I'll make the motion, we accept the minutes for the meeting of the, November sixth, twenty seventeen.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And town administrators' report.
Okay. Just want to inform the board that we have a department head meeting set for December sixth and a finance team meeting for, on November thirtieth. Both of those meetings will involve the depart, well, general, one for finance, one in general. For the finance, we're looking at, looking at budget materials, capital plan, an auction for surplus equipment, record storage. And I was wondering if there's a board member that is planning on serving, or is that the general or the chair?
Well, it would be, probably would be, it could be the chair or the personal chair.
Because the fin, I attend the finance committee meeting on Thursday night and they won't have a representative there also.
Okay.
Doesn't, it's not something that has to be, you know, just somebody wants to come and attend the meeting.
We'll put it out to the amendment seat as a member, as long as we don't have a core member can attend, you just won't have an official capacity from the board.
All right. I have a meeting set up with the random consulting Tracy Costa on the Freetown Screw Site for December thirteenth, that's what the scene is.
Good.
We're, as far as the credit card scanner, we're pushing it off a month till January, Unibank, a bank backed up in terms of other installations, and they needed a couple extra weeks, so we're pushing that out to January. Vadar, we're implementing that on December, the week of December sixth, and we're going to make the transfer from being a server-based accounting system to a cloud-based accounting system. The, I just want to recognize three people, Barbara LaFlore, Hallie Golds and Anita Howland, they're going to be going out and delivering Thanksgiving meals on Thanksgiving Day, and they do that independent of the COA and all of that, so I, I would like to give them some recognition for doing that. I did attend the Home Alliance Consortium in Taunton about a week and a half ago, and there are a couple of programs that I'd like to offer through that agency, Housing Rehab Program, as well as First-Time Home Buy program. And they're going to be setting up some meetings, informational meetings, here at Senior Center, probably in January, to have them come out and give an overview of the programs that they offer. The Housing Rehab is a great program for individuals that don't have the money to improve their home, you know, and it's a loan program, it's a fifteen-year loan, doesn't need to be paid back until the fifteen years of module interest rate. First-Time Home Buy program is a gap financing kind of thing where they, you know, may not be able to afford a down payment, or the house is just a little bit too out of their reach and we provide, once again, it's a payment that's made when, if they sell the home, if they sell it in, you know, five years in the future, then the loan will be repaid. So I think that's kind of exciting, I think there's an opportunity here in town to offer those programs. I got a call from Kevin regarding the need to have a soil board meeting. There's several open permits, they're all, all the permits are going to renew December thirty-first, so he'd like to, to set up a meeting with the board, and I can do that, you know, coordinate that, just to let the board know.
Usually, we do that on a Sunday, we did that, we've done it this.
All right, because he has a site that's involved.
There's half a dozen sites.
I did take a look at, the board had asked me to take a look at the posts, or not the posts, but the back of the building here, where we had the little accident. I talked to Chuck about it, I talked to Scott. The, the idea of putting poles into block potential vehicles from, you know, coming closer to the building is not going to work because the tank and the leach field are there.
Okay.
And they're not exactly sure where those two items are.
So they don't want to draw holes in some tanks?
We don't want to, we don't, we don't want to draw, and then we talked about, like, some concrete barriers, like jersey barriers. And the concern there was that it's, if it's a handicapped way.
Right.
That it has to be a certain, I believe it's like five feet in order to be accessible, so that would eat up either the parking lot or the sidewalk. So at this point, I'm not sure, you know, what the board would like, you know, what would you do, whether we should just, there was some talk about moving the handicapped parking space to the front of the building. I'm, I'm not sure how that would alleviate the potential for, you know, putting a pole in, in the back.
Yeah, we'll kind of change it on it.
Yeah. That's where I'm at with that. The other, the other thing I wanted to make mention about the, on the election, not on the election, the special town meeting, that the board needs to call is that we did have a discussion with DCR, Department Conservation Recreation, regarding land on Chase Road. I have been talking to Scott Proventure, who is DCR's representative. He had to go for a short period of time and we're just catching up in terms of what's going on there, but he did inform me that we need to have the special town meeting before the beginning of March because I guess the funds are in potential jeopardy because they're grant funds, and I believe they'll expire at the month, so I don't know if that gives us the month of March or not.
Do you know if the last, the one we had at the town, the annual town meeting was in sixteen? Is that superseded now because there's been a change in what plans they're taking? Is that why?
I believe that that's, that's the case.
Is that why the votes no longer valid?
They need, they need a new vote. The, I've also, we also discussed some numbers and it is substantially less than was previously discussed, primarily because they're going to be doing some of the, the work on the site. So that, that's a consideration in terms of how you want to.
Can you get those numbers to us, please, and prospective date of when, when he wants the election by, well, not the election, the town, the town meeting by, so we can work it all into the same.
Yeah, I was going to mention that when we were trying to look at it.
Looks like that meeting might be before, before March.
So DCR is doing what?
They're, they're purchasing several properties off Chase Road. Two of the properties are in the front of, facing Chase Road, there's a structure on one of them and they want to use that area, they're, they're going to take down the house and they're going to use those two lots to create a parking area. But the money to buy the land in the back, as well as for the two lots, is, is coming from a grant that's going to expire.
The host is currently condemned and there's a question whether there was some site contamination, too, so they're supposed to remediate all that. Okay, sorry.
We are, I've been working with the animal control officer about two dog complaints. I've been trying to, one of them, I've been trying to, I thought we were going to have a meeting and it sort of fell through. I'm trying to mediate them before they get here so that the board's time is not taken up by dog complaints, but it appears that one of them is going to end up here.
Okay. I appreciate your efforts. Is that all?
Yep, that's it.
Perfect. Keep the good work. Thank you, David. Board of Health, you already did your two variances, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Personnel Board, I'll change hats because I need a hat. Change hats to Chairman of the Board, the Personnel Board. I have a change of status form, actually, an appointment form for Bruce Wilber. Please let persons, town of Freetown, by Richard Thore, invested in us, worded backwards, but by the laws of the Commonwealth, do hereby appoint you Cable Advisory Committee, term June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, effective November twenty-first, two thousand seventeen. Do I have a motion to endorse?
I have a, make that motion to endorse the appointment.
I'll second the motion, motion made and second, and any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, actually, it doesn't have to be done at this meeting, but I also put together a charge for the committee, just identifying the tasks that the board would like them to work on.
Perfect.
What I'll do is I'll email it, I'll tell the board members and they can write comments and they'll.
Absolutely, it's not on our agenda, so we really can't discuss it, but please, that would be a good thing. I have a change of status form for Nicholas Drinkwine, submitted by the, the police chief, chief, do you have any comments on this change of status form?
No.
Okay. Change of status form, dear board members, Mr. Drinkwine is scheduled to attend the Mass Police Training Council, Recruit Officers Academy at Plymouth as a student officer beginning January twenty-seven, twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. Attached police filing, change of status form for Mr. Drinkwine, reflecting his student officer status while attending the academy. Should you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, I just did. Sincerely, Colin Abbott, Chief of Police, I just did, he doesn't have any comments. So I'd like a motion to endorse a change of status form.
Just one question.
Sure.
Has he passed all the pre-tests?
Yes, he has, he's been accepted into the academy, we're just waiting the formal, formal letter, but everything's on.
Physical is good, pat's good, physical's good, all that stuff's good.
Yes.
Perfect.
I'll make the motion that we.
Sorry. Nicholas Drinkwine, student officer at Police Academy, based hourly rate of twenty-two sixty-four, educational incentive rate not applicable, this would be a new hire.
I'll make the motion that we all accept the change of status form for Nicholas Drinkwine.
I'll second that motion, motion's made and second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, new business in front of the board, dates for upcoming selectmen's meetings, Monday, December fourth, Monday, December eighteenth, Tuesday, January second, Tuesday, January sixteenth, two thousand eighteen. Any issues with the January second? It's a Tuesday after, any issues? Okay. Why are we pushing the, the second one, though? Okay, perfect. So two Januaries, Tuesdays in January. Executive session's always left on the agenda, do we miss anything? Like, kind of skipped around a little bit? Looks like I got everything. Okay, we have an executive session. Now, there was two things on, the agenda only shows the one.
Yeah, we struck the other one and I forgot to update the page.
Okay. So this is the official agenda, though?
Yes.
The official agenda only has one.
Correct.
Okay. Executive Session, Mass General Law, chapter thirty, section, thirty A, section twenty-one A, three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Freetown Police Association, if an open meeting law may have detrimental effect, detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Chair so declares.
I'll make a motion that we enter executive session.
I have a motion made, I'll second the motion, I have a motion made and seconded to enter the executive session with the Police Association for discussion of upcoming negotiations. Any discussion on the motion?
Are you coming back?
We will not be coming back into open session. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Jones? Yes. We are in executive session.